Okay, see here.
It looks like I just caught the connection, so it'll probably go live in a couple of seconds here.
Yeah.
It shows a countdown of 1.33.
We're good.
Don't forget to record too, Jamie.
Yes ma'am.
Cheryl, really quick, the cutest baby of the year award goes to your little granddaughter.
Sorry.
Cheryl's on mute, but that's okay.
Where'd he go? Oh yeah. I was, I was doing that map, sorry.
Oops, sorry. Cutest ever, happy baby, so much fun.
That's awesome.
I think you're all set, Jamie, I'm gonna go.
Okay, ready?
Okay Dan, thank you, have a good evening.
You too.
Dan. Alright, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everyone to rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody, nice to see everyone. Milton is excused tonight, he's at his daughter's soccer game, bless his soul on a night tonight. It's her last one, so we wish her well and we're really glad he was able to join her. I have a little piece of celebration before we go into the bulk of our meeting. On special occasions, the Board of Education has the honor and the privilege of awarding what we call a cause for applause, which is to recognize service and work above and beyond that brings really great things and reflects well on our district. And so tonight, we are honoring Ann Olvaney for the following. For reinventing, organizing, and coordinating the Great Pumpkin Walk this year known as the Pumpkin Drive-Thru 2020. The Great Pumpkin Walk is a Canadaco tradition where students carve jack-o'-lanterns and an organized, family-friendly walk near the fairground on the Ontario County Pathway celebrates their creations. Proceeds benefit the Ontario County Pathways Association. Due to this year's pandemic, the walk could not occur in the traditional form, so Ann and many helpers improvised and created a drive-through experience at the middle school, which raised nearly $700 in donations to benefit the Ontario County Pathways. So with gratitude, we recognize this excellent example of community spirit and partnership. Thank you Ann and all of your wonderful helpers for providing a really awesome experience for people. Here's our applause. So, I got to do the fun part, Jamie, sorry.
You don't think my part's fun?
I'm sure it's even more fun.
Oh, thrilling. Buckle up and get ready, here we go. So, I just have a couple of updates in fact, but they may take a little time. So, I will share my screen if you don't mind. Think it'll make it a bit easier, I know you can't see each other when I do that and it's a bit problematic, but can you give me a thumbs up if you can see my screen and it has kind of a heat map looking thing? Thank you. So, you may have heard us talk about this Governor Cuomo Cluster Action Initiative. And as you might guess, sometimes initiatives change, sometimes guidance changes, and lo and behold, things just changed. So, I want to talk with you a little bit about this and hopefully bring some clarity around what changed. But, for those of you that may not be familiar, the governor and his team will designate, if there's a hotspot of infections, a breakout of infections, a red zone where it's most confined. Alright, and that's the most restricted zone, the red zone. Then they'll likely set up a perimeter that they call an orange zone, and that has another level of restrictions, a little bit further away from the epicenter of where the breakout was. And then the third would be a yellow zone, which has a little less restrictions, but still restrictions based on their proximity to the epicenter of the breakout. And so it kind of looks like this in general. Here's an example of Brooklyn a few weeks back and what that looked like. But scrolling down, we learn more information all the time, but this, actually this slide that I've shared in our forums, I've shared previously with all of you, is no longer entirely accurate. And so essentially, looking down here at schools, what I want to point out is, if we're designated red or orange, we're closed immediately. However, there's new information about that and I'll share that momentarily. If we're designated yellow, we can remain open, but we have to randomly test 20% of our students and staff population each week. If the in-person population. And there's a few issues with this. Number one, obviously it doesn't account for the fully virtual population. So, the families and children who selected fully virtual, or the staff who were fully virtual, it wouldn't necessarily impact. The other piece we've given feedback to the Department of Health around is, places like our Transportation Department, Ops Center, District Office, they're not reflected in the state's dashboard. They're only, the only things we can submit are school buildings where students are attached to and have a beds code. Well, these other buildings don't have that, and so it's negating, it's neglecting that density of population. And so, this is all part of the calculation we have to do to know what is 20%. For us, 20% is around middle of 600, but we would estimate to test approximately 700 weekly to account for kids who might be absent, you know, staff that might be absent, to make sure we're getting that mid-600 each week. Now, new information just came out that if you're designated orange or red, you must close down for a bit of time, in fact, three days. You can return in a red or orange zone if you test everybody on day five. So we could conceivably, if we were red or orange, bring everybody back by day five if everybody has been tested and can show a negative test. For any of you who've gone to get tested, you know that the turnaround is not that quick, wouldn't happen that fast. And I can't even, I'll be a bit transparent and vulnerable here, I can't even fathom how we could pull that off in two weeks, let alone five days. But it's something to keep in mind, that's new guidance that just came out. Now, we'd asked all along, what does this, what designates red, orange, yellow? And we've had very little information on that, but last week, some information was released. We are in Ontario County a tier-three group. And essentially, you're designated yellow if your seven-day rolling average positivity rate is above 3.5%. Okay? Right now, in Ontario County, as of today, our seven-day rolling average positivity rate is exactly 2%. So we're below the yellow. It would have to be 4.5% to be orange and 5.5% to be red. But if you look over where it's highlighted here, geographic area, zip code. So what we believe, and again, we don't have total clarity on this, we believe, let's say there was a hotspot and a breakout in Victor, let's just use that for example. It's a different zip code than us. And so would that zip code be determined red and then, then you would go to the orange and then yellow, would that yellow reach our zip code in our school, perhaps in parts of Farmington, for example? But these are things to pay close attention to. Additionally, another question we have, who is testing 700 people every week if we're yellow? We've been around and around about that, had many phone calls with Ontario County Department of Health, our county leaders, and even at the state level. And what we believe to be true, although there's different practices around the state, is that really the Department of Health would work with the state, the state would send resources, would there be contracts with people like perhaps EMT and a variety of other people to help deliver these tests. Now I say that because some of the smaller, more remote counties have worked with the Department of Health and the school nurses have delivered those tests, but I have reiterated and assured our Department of Health here in Ontario County that our nurses would not have capacity to do that. They just, they simply do not have time in their day to test that many. And so, we're working with them to try to sort that out, but it's a lot to still consider. But again, that's really the yellow, orange, red designation. A lot of information still needs to come forward. I've asked for our county leaders, if we could have a Zoom meeting to really kind of go through this and plan for this in a proactive manner, because right now, if it were to be designated, I have to be honest, I don't think we'd have the capacity to start doing this. The structures are not in place, there's just too much unknown. I know our county manager, Brian Young, asked if we could wait a day or two, they're trying to get some more answers from the state government. And certainly, yes, we need answers, time is of the essence, and as quick as we can get to this, the better off we'll be. And so, we're still looking at that. That's one piece. The other piece is this change in New York travel guidance that came out over the weekend. And so, I don't know that many of us slept after seeing this because of the impact that it has, but this is pretty ambiguous. And in fact, I was able to communicate with Mary Beer from Ontario County, Brian Young, a variety of area superintendents, and actually, we got connected with some state representatives today because I had a lot of questions about this. And they did respond and gave us an answer that is a little bit perplexing, but let me, let me explain about. Where this really is impacting us right now, and I'll just be frank, is with club and travel sports. So, we have a number of club and sports that are traveling to places like Pennsylvania or New Jersey, or matter of fact, Maryland. And so if they went to Maryland and they're less than 24 hours previously, you know, there was nothing that needed to be done, they were less than 24 hours. And the contiguous states, there was nothing that needed to be done, there are contiguous states, there's no restrictions. That obviously leaves people feeling pretty uneasy. But right now, the new rules are, and Brian, feel free to chime in if I mess any of this up, because I'll be honest with you, this is, I'm still trying to wrap my head around it. But if someone leaves a state and goes to a state that's restricted, not one of the contiguous states, upon return, they have to quarantine and on day four, they have to take a COVID test. They can only return with a negative COVID test. Brian, you just unmuted yourself, is it less than 24 too? Is that what you're gonna chime in there?
No, it's just the other part is, you know, let's say they go to Maryland, oh, you're doing less than 24, you're saying right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, yep.
There's so many pieces to this. If they go for more than 24 hours, and this one's peculiar, they actually have to test, take a COVID test three days before coming to New York, then quarantine, and take another test on day four being back in New York. So my question is, for example, going to Maryland for a sport tournament and you're there for 48 hours, you test the day before you leave, go there for 48 hours, come back, quarantine, test on day four, and then have to wait three or four days for your negative result before you can come back. Michelle's living this life too, I see her nodding her head vigorously. The contiguous states... Oh, now I've lost my train of thought, the contiguous states, there is no restriction essentially for contiguous states, but there's language that says travel has to be for essential business only. And that was the sticking point that I really wanted to get an answer from the state government on today, because it's, that's really, you know, contrary to one another, essential business only versus a sport tournament. And I really pressed this hard with the state, they actually responded and said, "Do you have a recommendation?" I offered what I thought was a logical recommendation, and he just responded and said, "We're not restricting them from traveling to contiguous states for youth in travel sports." So, that's where we are right now, it is a little bit mind-boggling. Our local Department of Health doesn't feel comfortable with it, some of our staff and families in the community, they're not comfortable with it, but that's kind of where we are. Jen, I see your hand up.
So, if we go back up in this document where you talked about the test three days before departure, one of the things that I don't understand and maybe no one in this meeting understands yet, is I don't, I don't know whether you have to have the test three days before you go or within three days before you go.
Do we?
In that, I don't, I don't know if there's flexibility in that three, I think, or whether it has to be exactly three before you go.
We believe it's within three days.
That's what I thought.
So this is another thing that Brian Young is trying to find more information, more clarity, but again, I've asked to meet about this, I think we need to be pretty consistent and uniform. But, you know, I would assume we'll have a meeting the next couple of days to try to gain clarity, because every weekend, we have people traveling to other states with club and travel sports. And the last thing I want to do is be responsible for regulating club and travel sports. I don't want any part of that, but there does need to be consistency, I think. Michelle?
I was, I was just gonna ask the question that you may have started to answer, is how many, how many club and travel sports groups are we aware of or in existence that may be playing a little fast and loose with the rules? And how, what's our responsibility when we know about them?
So, when we know about them, we investigate each case, Vern calls, he does some investigations, we're asking everybody to fill out the travel form and explain what had occurred. We've asked them where they've stayed, how long were they there, you know, we investigate and we become aware of them. In fact, I'll be honest, most of our parents, students and staff, they're honest people. They, they're calling us and saying, "This is what we're, this is what we're looking to do", you know, "Help us understand what we can and can't do", but it's hard because, you know, I feel like sometimes we're giving advice and we're not entirely sure about the advice, because we're getting different advice or different information, which makes it challenging, but you know, there are a lot of teams going. And I'll also say that a lot of the people are not being loose with the rules. They're trying to do it right. But again, I think that pass-through, and that was one of the things I said with the state representative, is I really feel like that 24-hour pass-through rule was, "I'm driving and I need to stop at a hotel for a night, or I have a layover at the airport", it's not to go to a wedding or, you know, or, you know, some larger gathering event, but still, I'm there less than 24 hours, so I'm safe. Maybe it's just my interpretation, but that just doesn't seem to make sense. I think I saw Julianne's hand.
So, I'm wondering how this new, this new system seems to supersede the list, like that travel advisory list, because this is basically now all states except the contiguous states. And I'm wondering how that connects to our health form that people are filling out every day? And because I think it references that list, if I remember correctly, and do we need to look at that, and what kind of answers are we gonna get based on what's happening on the weekends?
That's a great question. So we're asking anybody who travels to a restricted state, which is on that list, to fill out the New York travel form. And when they fill it out, they'll get a response back that says if they need to quarantine based on what they put in there, or they can come right back to work. And we ask them to take a screenshot of that and share it with Vern and their building, or their direct supervisor. So if that DOH form is saying they're, they're free to come back to work, that is what we follow. Yeah, it's a great question though.
And that would be for, is the same true for, for kids?
It's the same for kids, and what I should have followed up, to fill out that travel form, you can't even fill it out for a contiguous state because they're not listed. Even though it says essential only, they're not listed as an option when you go to fill out that form. Brian, am I missing anything here?
No, that's what I was just gonna mention, is the fact that you can't even, they can't even fill it out if it's a contiguous state, because it's not one of the options in the dropdown.
I thought I saw John's hand go up.
Hey, just, going back to that yellow, if we get to that point, do, two parts, do parents need to consent to a student being tested? And can adults say, "No, I don't want to be tested"?
Answer to both those questions are yes, we believe. So, we actually started working on a consent form. I actually reached out to the Department of Health and I was going to do the test with a couple of primary school students that consented to it, just to show them it's not the deep one, it's a shallow, and it's not that scary, and then send it with the consent form. But we've been advised that that really is a consent form that should come from the Department of Public Health and not us. And right, we, we can't require someone to take a medical test, the governor could, it could come from his office, but right now, we don't believe we have the authority to do that, nor would we want to, to be honest with you. Michelle?
Yeah, I just would just weigh in where we're approaching Thanksgiving and the holiday season where we know people have a break. And really, first of all, contiguous states doesn't necessarily mean all contiguous states right at this moment. They haven't addressed Pennsylvania or Vermont. And number two, you know, I've, I've been flooded the last, like, day and over the weekend with questions from staff members who were gonna drive to states and had the ability to quarantine in some cases, in some cases, they, they really shouldn't be doing that. So this is, I'm hoping there'll be more clarification coming out from the governor's office about some of these weird nuances about this, but it is really shook everybody up, because there really, there is no list anymore. As of, you know, as of Wednesday, the list is gone, right? It's every, it's every state, but the three that are currently on the okay list, so weird.
Yeah, this was in effect Wednesday, I should have heard that. Sorry Brian, go ahead.
I was just gonna mention, we've had a couple of communications too that have indicated which the contiguous states are. The, actually, the only one that we've seen not in that group is Ohio. Ohio is a state that, even though we connect with, in one of our communications, they did list Pennsylvania and Vermont, but not Ohio, for example.
So, oh, Jen?
So, is, is it clear that the Department of Health will pay for these tests? Or is it a district responsibility?
No, we believe that it's not going to be a district responsibility. We believe it's going to be a state or federal government. We believe, I believe it's a federal government-funded thing, but I could be mistaken in that. But fiscal onus is not supposed to be on the school. Michelle may know differently for private industry.
Yeah, I think for, for the, on the private side, it depends on where you go to get your test. If you go to the state-sponsored sites like MCC and you sign up on, through the 800 number or online, then that's supposed to not be charged to you. But your health insurance carrier, or if you go to a U of R lab or a CVS lab, you might be charged directly. So it's, it's just a mess.
And for us, the tests, you know, if we were to go to a yellow zone, those tests that we would have to do, they indicated to us that Department of Health would provide those tests for us, and they would be the rapid tests, as Jamie said, the shallow ones.
Right. And I would just want one more point of clarity on this topic unless there's other questions. You may hear people say, "Well, that guided, there was guidance that said you couldn't travel for sports." They're right, there is guidance that says you can't travel for sports if it's a school sport. It does not, it specifically says school sports, not club and travel. And the gentleman from the state said, "We are well aware of the issue and concern with travel and club sports. They are allowed to travel to the contiguous states." That was essentially the response.
I had heard they're gonna have the prior health teachers that are now administrators put the test out?
You wanna see me pass out, don't you?
Well, you and Brian, right, you're both, you're both health certified, so maybe you guys should do it.
I'm in.
I just muted myself.
Okay, I have one other piece that could generate some discussion, so I apologize to the folks that are here to present. I'm keeping you. I want to share my screen again, and I want to talk a bit about the data collected from the survey and then kind of, I'll show you the survey, I'll talk through it, then I'll stop sharing so we can see each other and have some dialogue if you don't mind. Okay, thumbs up if you can see. Alright, thank you. So, we had over 2,000 people respond, and you can see the breakdown here. So, for example, the academy, we had 261 parents, 96 instructional staff, 179 students, and 39 non-instructional. And so you can kind of see which buildings they came from, where it gets a little confusing, and hopefully you can see my cursor down here, you see, this is somebody has, who either works in or has a child in both the primary and elementary school. And so it's kind of a different area, and so, or has middle and academy, elementary, middle, elementary and academy, or all three, so forth and so on. So, we have 31 parents that answered it to have a child in all three buildings, so God bless them. But anyway, here's who filled it out, over 2,000. I'll go through some of the easier, you know, pieces, this learning choice. It really talks about, you know, what, what is your child or what are you teaching in right now? So this was only for instructional staff, parents, or students. So of the people who filled it out, 64% almost were the in-person/hybrid folks. And then you had the hybrid-only, that's a little confusing. Probably should be down here with this group, so you're talking more, boy, we'll have to look at that data piece, that data set. Virtual is about 14% of the people who filled it out. We had both virtual and hybrid at 6.4%, and then virtual only 2.3%. So some of this is staff, but anyway, it was a good cross-section, I think is the point for this piece. Interesting piece here was the tech changes. I asked a question, since we've made some upgrades to our technology, is it working for you? And 50% agreed that it was, almost 30% were neutral on that. And so they didn't really feel like it was working or not working. So in essence, that could be as high as 80 or, or not. And, but 20% disagreed with that statement, that technology was working for them. So because of this mixed results, we are going to be generating another survey specific to technology to try to get a root at what, what are the issues here. So, our PDC, DTC, and Dan Bowman and some folks are in the process of starting to dig into that a bit. Another question, "I feel safe." So, almost 75% of the folks said "I feel safe" based on what the district is doing, safety measures. Almost 20%, 18.8% were neutral on it, so they either felt safer, didn't feel safe. And then, if you look at the people who disagreed, it was under 7% disagreed that I feel safe. And so, I really feel like as a district, we've taken safety, the most conservative possible approach to safety. We've really dotted our i's and crossed our t's, and thank you to folks like Jen and Vern and Brian and our custodial staff and our nursing staff. I know I'm forgetting people, but we've had some people really doing some pretty heroic work around safety. But we, we have to recognize that we still have some folks that aren't feeling safe. And so, what can we do to communicate a little more? And I will say, early on, there is a way that people can submit to the state if they feel like reopening guidance isn't being followed. And then that information goes to me, and we had several of those initially, and they were all worded very similarly. And what it told us, and it was all coming from one building, is we needed to do more to educate our staff about what safety measures we're doing. And we actually did that, Brian helped guide this conversation, Vern and the principal, met with the different units, talked them through what, you know, what we're doing. And since then, knock on wood, those, those submittals have gone away. So I think part of it is we need to do more education of our staff, what we're doing safety-wise, and give them avenues to share in a safe manner what their concerns might be. Some people may not feel safe coming forward. We asked about PD needs for technology, and you can see it's, it's really divided pretty equally. Some people, and this is staff, students and parents, you know, we have a good number of people that want more PD on school, Brave Square, Infinite Campus, Seesaw and Iredy. And so, working with our tech integrators in that department to offer PD for everyone, not just staff, students and parents. Here's another piece that's really telling for us, "I believe the mental health support is sufficient." 48% agree, 37% are neutral. I'm, I would assume, but it's dangerous to assume, I don't want to assume, is that perhaps this 37%, they personally not had a need in their mind for mental health support? I don't know that to be sure, but almost 15% disagree that the mental health support is sufficient. And it caused a lot of us to reflect, why is that? We have a dynamite team for mental health here, we really do, skilled people. And I remember back in the spring, every forum, every communication, mental health was focused and we gave a phone number and a point person, and we talked about it often. We really haven't done that enough this year, much at all. And so that's, that's a change we're going to implement to see if that number improves. But we do have a dynamite team, it's just making people aware of how to access it and who to access for what, is where we're gonna put some of our emphasis. And then down here, I believe academic expectations are, 68% said "just right", 21% said "too high", and 11% said "too low". And so, I guess I'm not terribly surprised by that. I think we need to dig into that a little more and find out of the virtual students, how do they feel? Of the hybrid in-person students, how do they feel? I will say that we looked at some of our data early on, how kids are doing right now, we have a lot more failing than what we typically would. That's not unusual, it's not unusual, or it's not specific to Canadago. I think a lot of schools are feeling that right now, because learning remotely is hard, and all of our kids are doing it at least to some level on some days. And so what can we do to help? We really need to dig into this data some more and see, is it only at certain grade levels? Is it only certain classes, is it only certain buildings? To figure out what does this mean so we can provide more support, more access for students so they can be successful. And then the, the last one is, um, building and district communications. Uh, by and large, people felt like communications was just right. Some felt a little too much. Uh, and some felt not frequent enough, but the number was very, very small. And that's, that's a hard one. We, we, we struggle with that all the time. Are we crushing people with information? How do we back off on the information? Now I purposely skipped probably the one glaring piece of information here. In the survey, I said, if for semester two, we returned and we required everyone to wear a mask and use a barrier, a plexiglass barrier on their desks, but we would have to be less than six feet distance. Would you be comfortable? Would, would you be interested in learning more about that? This was only a temperature check, this entire survey. This is not a decision-making survey. This is a temperature check that tells us what we need to further investigate. And you can see it with a split, almost right down the middle, fifty-seven to forty-three. You know, very divided. Fifty-seven would agree with that, uh, forty-three disagreed with that. Now, in my mind, for, for, um, you know, just to be clear with everybody, I felt like we needed to be more around that seventy percent agreement in order for us to change our direction. We needed a super, super majority of people to feel that way and we don't have that. So based on this data, my feeling is this whole concept of mask and barrier is not something we should explore. But what else can we do to build access for students we're struggling? So that they can be provided support they need to find success. And I know as a leadership team, we started talking about different concepts and different ideas. And I've challenged them to come up with, um, a, a concept based on an idea that I had. Uh, and we're gonna talk about that this week, but I don't wanna kind of get too far ahead of ourselves with that, but I'm gonna stop sharing. And I'm just going to say that the whole notion of masks and a barrier, I don't believe we should explore any longer. I don't think it's a time, I think also, part of the issue is notice, recognizing the time the survey went out. It went out at a time that our numbers are starting to climb again and people are a little bit more concerned probably than they were in July or August. So, um, we are working on a, a way to, um, build in more days and support for students who are struggling. And struggling doesn't necessarily mean that they have to be failing. It could be a student who usually gets high nineties, but are mid-eighties now because they don't have that direct and explicit instruction. But providing them kind of a structured support where they can do work under the guidance of a certified teacher or knowledgeable staff is really kind of a, a hint at what we're working at. But anyway, I'll stop talking and maybe take any discussion or questions that any of you may have.
Michelle. Gotcha Cheryl.
Um, boy, I have a lot of questions tonight. So first, I'm really glad that you're going to, um, resurvey a little bit on the technology questions. I will share from some constructive criticism. I, I found, um, some of that a little bit of confusion because how would a lot of our parents know what changes we made to technology necessarily? So, um, so just, so I think we need to be conscientious of how we ask those questions so we can figure out how to slice and dice that data. And we may be able to do this with the mental health question, but I'd be interested to know where are those, are there pockets of different populations where those seem to be higher? So for example, can we look at that data and say, teachers who are doing hybrid in the primary elementary school, what does that look like versus parents of virtual learners? I mean, I think we could, we have beautiful ways to slice and dice data and Lynn's, you know, Lindsay Tracy or Tracy Lindsay. We'll, we'll reverse it today. Um, I'm sure it can crunch numbers in lots of different ways, but I, I, I'm not sure that I, those questions led up to that kind of slicing and dicing.
Yeah, thank you for that. And Tracy actually created analytics where we can look at it every single way that you just mentioned and probably tens and twenties and thirty different ways beyond that. And so it's been very helpful to kind of focus on where these concerns are coming from or are they broad across the, across everybody, all stakeholders. Um, but yes, this, and, and I, maybe I should have been more clear with it, but you know, really this survey was, was only to ta- take the temperature. You know, it was not looking for kind of in the weeds information. Uh, we just needed some direction. We, our time is of the essence. Give us some general overall feelings and then we can kind of dig in and make our next decisions. But yes, feedback is very well taken.
Cheryl.
My concern is with our staff and the mental health. I know that we have mental health things put in place for kids and for parents if they need to address it with their children, but oftentimes I know staff does not see our own instructional staff as support if they need it for mental health. And I know that it, that these times are really wearing on them. The longer it goes, the more difficult. Even though they know what they're doing, it seems to be more difficult as things move along. So I'm just concerned about that.
That's a great point. I know Brian occasionally will send out the EAP, um, contact information, but yeah, you're, you're spot on. It's something we need to pay more attention to.
And I think also, you know, we've shared that we need to have grace at this time. And I really think we need to have grace with our staff because they're under a ton of pressure. It, as our administrators too. It's not just, it, it's everyone is under so much pressure. So anything that we can do to help them, um, I support.
Agreed.
Jen?
Uh, just, just a comment, uh, from the Schneider House over the weekend. I will say that I think some of the technology hiccups and challenges are not born of the district. I was amazed at the number of times over the weekend on a random Sunday afternoon that Schoology itself rose. And I know it wasn't just our district, but many, because I'd heard from friends in other districts. It would freeze for two or three minutes and start up again. And, and I can see the frustration building in, in my youngest kid over that. It, it's not huge amounts of time, but, but I understand how that can be a challenge to a kid that's still trying to figure out how to do this virtual stuff. Um, the other thing that, that I would like to bring up for, uh, the district to explore is how we're managing homework assignments over the course of the week. And you know that I am not a fan of an idea of some sort of homework policy, that I think we have to leave it to our professionals to decide what homework is appropriate. They are, they are the professionals in the room, virtual or not. But it, it has, um, surprised me a bit about the, the homework that gets assigned on a Friday afternoon and is due on a Sunday. Um, and some of this may just be the last minute procrastination Schneider kids. Um, but, um, Sunday nights in our house are pretty busy. And, and I find that interesting because it's not keyed on the next week's work. Um, something to think about.
Any other questions or comments? I, I think you have the sense we wanna help, Jamie. I, I, maybe I'm just speaking for myself. I have no idea how to. Um, and so if you have some pretty specific suggestions for us, we're happy to hear them. Um, it's hard because one of the ways I think we feel like we connect and maybe try to lift spirits, which I think should be one of the primary charges of a board of education is to support people is by being in schools. And so, you know, now being able to do that, I think, at least, again, speaking for myself, I feel a little disconnected sometimes. And so if there are specific things that you have in mind that are roles we can play, we would really love to. So I don't need them now, but if you think of things moving forward, please let us know.
Thank you. I, I do have some ideas and I'd love to chat with you when you have a second to do that. Um, that would be helpful.
Great. Any, yeah, Julian.
All right, um. So I will admit that it was a week and I missed the survey, so the parent part of me didn't see that. Um. I'm sure my kids would give me a hard time. I'm wondering if we asked or if we have a sense of if we continue with the models we have right now into the second semester. Do we have a sense of how many people would want to switch models? Or how many people would be comfortable or, or intend to stay with the model they're in? Or did we not go there yet, given that we were still collecting other types of data?
Uh, we didn't go there yet, um, because, uh, you know, I was really more curious about this whole concept of the mask and the divider. Um, yeah, I'm envious of the schools that can, they're back full-time, five days a week. I, I just am. And I want that so badly for our students and our staff and our community, for we're much larger than a lot of those schools. And, or we have other restrictions. We don't have multiple elementary schools or cafeterias or, or staff to pull that off. Um, as I look at our folks from the primary elementary school, they're on this Zoom right now and, and they know because they've worked so hard trying to pull it off too. Um, but yeah, it's, it's, we didn't ask that. I wanted to get a sense of this first. Uh, I think I was actually having a conversation with Emily and Heidi, I think last week and um, she projects there'll be a lot of students wanting to come back to the hybrid in-person. Right, Emily? Isn't that what you were saying to me last week?
Yeah, I thi- I think we've had, since we've had a lot of families who really have been asking to switch back to the in-person model. Um, that's why I kind of had that prediction and also because I think a lot of the youngest learners are really struggling um, to, you know, make the remote days work. But now that we have, you know, some of the infection rates increasing, I'm kind of doubting my prediction a little bit, so I really don't know.
Emily's on the record as saying it'll increase every month now. So time will tell. And that also means, I mean, keep this in mind, that means if we have a big shift one way or another, we may have to change teaching assignments. And, uh, that would be a, a teacher change for a student. Now I said this back in August. That's a, a possibility and everybody heard me say it, but, um, it's different to say it back in August and then for it to happen in January, February. So that's something that we know would not make people happy, but it, it may have to happen.
Does that mean, Jamie, that you would, that the kids will get reshuffled? So you might switch, you might switch entire teachers?
It could. It could mean that, yes. Depends on, it depends on the change of, uh, selection, but it could mean that. I think what you'd see more than anything, John, is someone who might have been a virtual teacher, come back to an in-person teacher and pick up some students from some other classes and some of the virtual kids. I think it could mean that. Um, or I'm a virtual student, now I have a, a different virtual teacher. And that, I think those are the two things we might see more of. The time would tell.
Any other questions or comments or concerns to share? Anything else from you, Jamie?
That's funny.
Thank you. That was really fun. I appreciate it. I don't see, I don't think Carlin is with us tonight, so we'll move past that. We have minutes up for approval. I'll ask for motions, please. Michelle and a second, Jen, questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? That carries unanimously, Deb. And Matt?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, tonight's presentation is one that was requested by the Board of Education as one of the topics I'd like to learn a little bit more about. So as you can see, we are joined by members of the PES administrative team who are here to talk to us about our student placement process. Now, in a given year, this is a pretty intensive process with a lot of steps and lots of data, as you can imagine. Uh, that was turned upside down this year and the team did an incredible job to try to make it something uh, that could support, you know, what is normally a typical process, whether they feel very confident about, but loo- in lieu of not having the same data or the same timeframes or even the same information, um, the team really had to do some adjustment to, you know, make it a process that could help support um, getting students where they need to be for, for the current school year. So I'm gonna turn things over to our team, of course, as you know them as Brian, Lindsay, Emily and Heidi. So, uh, Mr. Farr, I believe one of them would love to be able to share their screen. I don't know if anyone in particular is volunteering for that opportunity.
You should be able to now. If you don't want to, I can share mine. Your call.
I'm happy to share mine. I have it up here. Can you see my PES highlight screen? Yes, thank you. Great. All set to start, Jeanie?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, um, hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start us off and I'll just do a little intro. We're gonna try to keep this, this to under ten minutes. So Brian, start your timer. You good? Okay, so we're gonna highlight the student placement process and, um, we're, it's something that we're very proud of because I feel like with, um, you know, fif- fifteen hundred students and um, you know, sometimes almost thirteen sections of each grade level, it can be a very complex process. Um, and I think that it would be easier if we would only take into, into consideration certain factors. But we really have made a, a, a really great effort to try to consider everything and anything that we can to make sure that students are placed in the best, um, classroom each year. So we're gonna talk just a little bit about that. And go on to the next slide here. So, um, what we'll highlight tonight is, um, just a little bit about our data and the processes that we actually use to place our students. And we have to start this off by talking about Tracy Lindsay or Lindsay Tracy, however you wanna say. Uh, but he has really worked with us the last few years to make this such an efficient process. And if, if anybody ever wants to see a day of it, it is, it's, it's like clockwork now, uh, with the exception of having a pandemic thrown in the mix. Uh, but it's really, it's really pretty amazing what he can do with all of the components that we want to take into consideration for placement. Um, we have a master spreadsheet that, um, allows us to check how many kids are, we've placed in each class, how, what their reading levels are. You know, the boy to girl ratio, um, if they're going on to another class with a student from the class the year before. It's really, um, it's pretty amazing what we're able to do in, in one spreadsheet. So we have to throw some kudos to him. Um, but I, I wanted to just note the people who are part of the process. And we have, um, an administrator or both administrators from each building, uh, a counselor, a social worker, a school psychologist, our IST teacher. Usually we have, um, you know, a special ed, either teacher or administrator. Um, and then we also have special area teachers as well. So we try to make sure that we have somebody from every group who can really help us give perspective um, on the students to, you know, to kind of enlighten the rest of the group if there's something that we should know about, you know, where the best place is. Um, I'm all, I'm gonna turn this over to, I think Heidi next, and she's gonna talk a little bit more about it.
Hi, everyone. So we have three different pieces of, of data that we really look at. Um, the first being from parents. And so in a typical year, what we ask parents to do is to just submit um, an email or something written just around anything that they'd like to share with us in the placement process. This year, because, you know, we felt parents were pretty overwhelmed with everything going on in the spring. We decided to do a Google form, so it was a little more structured. Uh, we had a really great response to that this spring. So I think that's actually something we may continue on with um, using next year. It, it was really helpful to us. Um, a- at another point, you can take a look at that link to the parent letter that we do send out. Um, but that information we use throughout the placement process, we can put it into a spreadsheet. So each student that had a parent provide input as we place that student, we really take a look at the feedback they're giving us. The next, um, is really coming from the teacher. And again, I'd love to just give a shout out to, um, Tracy Lindsay because what he does is he sends a spreadsheet to each teacher and they fill in kind of this spreadsheet and then he puts all of this into a get acquainted card is what we call them. Emily, if you wanna click on that, just to show them what a get acquainted card looks like. So this ends up being on a half a sheet of paper for us and this is the physical thing that we actually place the students with. And it's kind of a summary of a lot of the teacher input that we have. It also pulls in some information from our student data spreadsheets that Tracy also um, does throughout the year. And so that was that last piece. If you wanna go back to that presentation thing some. Um, that student data, we do have benchmark sheets, but some of that does get put on the get acquainted cards. And then the rest of that is in a spreadsheet. So we use all of this information to really, um, make sure that we have a nice, uh, balanced classroom for each of our teachers. Um, and Lindsay's gonna talk a little bit more about that. But I did wanna just share with you that, um, this year, you know, it definitely was not our typical year for placement. That student data, the benchmarking sheets, we didn't have a lot of spring data from our students. a lot of spring data from our students. The last data we had was January. So it really did make it a little more difficult to balance our classes. And we had to look more at last names. We've never had to look at that before. So it certainly wasn't your typical year. And this year, we did have to rely on that parent feedback and teacher input. And not as much as of that student data because we just didn't know necessarily what happened over that closure for some of our kiddos. So. Okay, so, and I think one piece that you didn't see on that get acquainted card that was added. We asked teachers to tell us what level of participation students had in their remote learning. So we said, is it little to none? Is it some? Is it consistent? Because we didn't want to put you know, all students in a class who had not participated in remote learning to the best of their ability. We were really trying to balance out those numbers as well. But when we come together as a team, there are just so many things that we try to think about and really dig in. Really knowing the students, but also knowing the needs that they have and what classroom would be best. You know, I was a middle school teacher. And so when I came to the elementary school, this was a whole new world. I just had never I had no idea that this level of conversation, we talk about every single child that we place. And so when we say to you, if you, you know, if you'd like to come down and see this, it's an amazing process to be part of. I truly love placement. We are looking at the number of students, you know, we have an enrollment, how many sections we have per grade level, what we think our class sizes need to be. We try to balance out our boy-girl ratio. We do take a look at triplets and twins and find out where their parents would like them placed. We do talk specifically about faculty and staff children and, you know, if they have some certain needs that we're going to meet because they're, you know, in our building and in our district. We do place, you know, our special ed students. We actually have those lists before we go into placement because all of our special ed teachers work together to determine where those students may be best and how their learning needs might be grouped together as they move forward to the next grade level. You know, we're talking about our ELLs, students with hearing impairments, you know, Deb McP will give us any kind of important information we need to know there. You know, students with 504 plans. We have an AIS provider that comes and kind of helps us put students receiving the same services or interventions into similar cohorts. We play, we work with Lynn Colleats to do our math enrichment. And, you know, of course, on those parent forms we have and teacher forms, we have some separate from or please place with. So when we're digging into, to all of these, you can see that it is a pretty massive undertaking when you're placing 1,500 students. And if we go forward one more. You know, I think that if you come down to placement, you just see that there are so many pieces that we have to bring to the table or the large classroom with us. This year, I know that the elementary did it in the Link Gym because we really just needed to be able to space out six feet apart. And I think the primary did it in, did you guys do the cafeteria?
Yeah, the cafeteria. We also had to have windows.
Yes, windows and doors. But you know, you can just see here that we bring in lots of supplies. We put everything up on chart paper. We print all of the get acquainted cards and we tape them up with you know, re-stickable glue because we moved them many times as we think about, is this a good placement? Oh, can't be with this student. Okay, we got to move to this chart. So we kind of go back and forth many times to make sure that we really have what we think is going to be the most successful placement for this student and every student. And then I think Brian is taking over the last slide.
Yeah, so just to summarize, you know, Emily mentioned at the very beginning, all of the different people that are involved in the process, you know, our social workers, our counselors, our instructional support teachers, the administrative team. And so everybody that's there just has a very clear role once we start this process because we needed to run efficiently and effectively. So everyone is given a role. I think one of my favorite roles here is the mediator or the discussion facilitator because you could get hung up on one talking about one specific student and where they should be placed. You can spend 20 to 30 minutes on that. And, and you really have to keep it moving. So you get to all students and you spend equal amount of time on, on all kids. You know, a lot of hands make light work, especially when people know what their job is when they walk into the, this process. You know, the number one thing I think we need to stress here is the fact that it's an organized process and you're looking at Emily, Lindsay and Heidi are really the ones that make this an organized process. I'm just along for the ride. It is amazing when, when this team does come together though, it is absolutely amazing how organized and efficient they are. And so that really summarizes the whole presentation and, and, you know, what we do as far as the placement process. But we'd be happy to take any questions that the board has. And I just, for the record, I want you to know, we did this in 10 minutes and 45 seconds. So not bad.
Will you unshare your screen so I can see everybody to call them, please? Thank you. That was great. Beth?
Okay. I, it's just a comment. I just have to say the proof is in the pudding and I had two kids who couldn't have been more different than night and day. They all went through primary elementary and I say with great pride to anyone who asked me, I never asked for a specific student or a specific teacher. And we never had a dud year. 10 years, not a dud. Every single year, the kid was completely matched with the teacher. And like I said, the kids were, my two kids are as different as night and day. So thank you, thank you, thank you. It's, it's truly an amazing process.
Any other questions or comments? Is, is this process typical? Do most school districts invest so heavily in doing this sort of work?
So, you know, in some of my previous experiences and Emily, you've had quite a few and so have you, Heidi, but a lot of times, you know, some of these neighborhood schools that have 200 children or, you know, even up to 500 kids in the school. You sometimes have one instructional support teacher maybe or a reading teacher that kind of does the placement for the entire building. And it is kind of a disservice, I think, to those kids because there isn't as much thought put into it. But when you do have, like Emily said, you've just got so many kids. You have all of this information. Let's take it into consideration when replacing these kids. It's the right thing to do, you know? So I don't think that there's many other schools that do this now.
Great. I think it feels really about having their voice really heard in the whole process too. I think that's awesome. I cut some, but I don't know.
The way Tracy organizes the data, the data for us is just incredible. I did placement in Victor, which is also a big district and there wasn't the data that was collected. So it was much more cumbersome. So this really makes it even, an even more efficient process. So you can see so many more data points to make it a better placement. When I, when I first came to Canada, Sue Kells busted out some of the old tally charts. Well, I don't even think they were old. She might have used them the year before. And you know, it was like, okay, we're adding one to Carson, one to O'Reilly. And then, you know, we started working with Tracy Lindsay to get these beautiful Google Sheets and they are life-changing because you know, I think it was really tedious to try to keep track of all of that by hand.
Great. Well, if there's nothing else, well, thank you so much. That was really informative and really fun to learn about. And you're welcome, obviously welcome to stay. Very welcome to go. Have a nice night. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Cool. Thanks, Matt. Thank you for, for doing that. We really, I think that was great. Let's see, we have a consensus agenda and supplemental. Ask for motions, please. I've got Cheryl and Jen, questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? That carries unanimously, Deb? And policy, Beth, will you report out, please?
Sure. So we have two more policies that we're bringing for a first read. The first one is a policy that we reviewed last year, comprehensive student attendance. I'm sure none of you will be surprised to know we need to add a piece that includes the distance and remote learning. So you'll see that paragraph in there. And then the other policy is again about online distance and remote learning. And that's a brand new policy. I'm pleased to say that, you know, we, we do have a couple of like these kinds of things that we need to add, but we are now starting to go through the manual that we did a year and a half ago, two years ago. And it's, it's very good for me to see that most of the policies are exactly what we need and we can just move forward and we don't have to continue to tweak them, which is awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Let's see, did anyone else attend character that can report out since Milt is not here? Oh, Jamie?
I did, yeah. It's, so we have two new chairpeople this year for the committee. Caroline Chapman and Vern Tenny are chairing the committee. We have a lot of new membership from the different buildings. As always, we shared out kind of what's happening in each building to support our character initiative. And we reviewed our charge. What, what is our charge for the year? Permanently. And it was just a great meeting to kind of reconvene. We haven't met in quite some time because of the pandemic. So it was nice to see our friends again. And it was also nice to get an email from Terry Shipley after how much she enjoyed the meeting. And so when she's happy about the meeting, you know, it probably went pretty well. But just kind of talking about this year and how despite all of our circumstances, we're trying to keep our character initiative at the forefront and the district's doing a great job of that.
Great, thank you. Julianne, diversity, equity and inclusion, please?
Yes, so we had our first meeting last week. There were about 35 people there of a group that's even larger than that. All kudos to Vern for really organizing and putting together an amazing meeting, especially with that number of people over Zoom and still really creating an opportunity to have a deep and meaningful conversation. We went through sort of the norms of the committee. Vern's been great about sending out work to do in advance in terms of collecting resources. I think most people on the committee are doing the 21-day racial equity challenge and participating in that. Did spend some time in breakout rooms to really get to know each other and to understand what brought different people to the conversation. And even just in those initial conversations, really broadening our understanding of the different, the really different concerns around diversity, equity and inclusion that different people are bringing to the table because all of us are seeing this sort of with our professional hats on, but also through the lens of our own experience. And it was really interesting to have that conversation. And then we did a process of trying to understand why we were doing this work that in terms of, we know what our end goal is, but thinking about what are the reasons and the purposes that bring us to this work. This isn't easy work. It involves difficult conversations. We all know it's going to involve difficult conversations, but really keeping at the forefront and understanding of why we're doing the work.
Great, thank you. And Jen, COVID-19, please?
So I would first like to say that I am really in the Brian, Vern, Mike fan club. If you had gotten the opportunity to spend as much as time as I have over the last several weeks working on this COVID-19 challenges, I guess we can call it, Brian, you would be impressed too. The, the level of tracking of all of the issues is just mind-boggling, absolutely mind-boggling. One of the things that I wanted to bring up to the board in a little bit of detail is some more information around why we're tracking certain numbers in spaces in the buildings and and I wanted to kind of give you a quick understanding of why that's important and why that'll continue to be done. You heard in the last meeting that we're tracking carbon dioxide because that essentially is a measure of the shared air in a space. So we all exhale carbon dioxide. The more that you have in a space, the more chance possibly you may have COVID in the space. So, but beyond that though, we're also tracking humidity. So why is that? Because as humidity drops, humidity for particulate, really small things in the air to float around. So in the summer, when it's humid and somebody coughs and there's some COVID in that, it's more likely to drop on your shoes because it's humid. It gets caught in that literal air or literal water in the air. In the winter, we kind of have a twofold problem. We are in enclosed spaces because it's cold and our humidity drops as we heat air. That means that small particles, including particles that could have COVID in them because that's under three microns or 0.3 microns in size will float around, right? And if it's in that shared area, it can really be shared. So we have this spreadsheet, Google Sheet that Brian started and we keep adding to over time to take a look at what our humidity levels are, what our carbon dioxide levels are and understand what those ratios really are over time. So we can watch rooms and decide what spaces may be a concern that we can go in and do some interventions with how we manage the air. How much filtration is in there? Outside air is pumped in, what the coil looks like. It gets pretty geeky pretty quickly, but Mike and I both love this kind of stuff. So there's continuous tweaking on this. The other thing that I think Vern talked to the staff about today was the idea of keeping windows cracked as much as possible. It is getting colder. We all admit that. But outside air is the best there is for keeping that air clean. So where you can, help the systems out and keep the window open. And last but not least, I don't think we would be where we are as a district without great behavior. When we talk about it on that team, it's really evident that staff and the, the kids are doing the right things in terms of behavior. And that is more important than any engineering tweak we can make in a building. So bottom line though, it is the trifecta of Brian, Vern and Mike. And I just have the pleasure of sitting and watching and work so well.
Great, thank you. Jamie, anything else to wrap us up? You're muted. You're muted. Thank you.
Geez, you think I learned that by now? If Jen, you're, and Vern and Brian and Mike, your, your lectures are beating me down. My window is open. I have a coat, a sweater, shirt tie, all that stuff on freezing. But that's one piece. The other piece is, nothing brings me more joy than seeing Brian walking around with that carbon dioxide detector. He loves it. It's just, just wanted to share that.
Great, thank you. Well, thanks for being with us tonight, everybody. If there's nothing else, I'll ask for motions to adjourn. Michelle and Jen, thank you very much, everybody. Have a good rest of the-